Okay, we'll call this council meeting to order on Monday, October 28th. Um, I'm sorry. Yeah, Area 1, stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you want to start out, people, you give the opening for it, please.
Sure. Dear Lord, please allow us tonight in council to make decisions that are better meant for all, and with a clear head, we pray.
Uh, clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Lawson? The booth?
Here.
And Sonic, here. Gumpkin?
Here.
Mr. Flower?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Um, Mr. Booth is running late. Um, I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Lawson.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Gumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Did everyone receive the minutes from the last regular meeting on October 14th? Any corrections or additions? Motion to accept. The rule. I'll second that.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Gumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Okay, auditor treasures report.
Good evening, everybody, council, city manager, attendees, and folks watching at home. This will be the auditors and treasurers report. We'll start with the treasures for September 2024. You'll see on the first page, I guess technically the second page after the cover page, total account balances for the sweep accounts, the money market, as well as their certificate of deposit, totaling to $6,918,186.74. So, September 30th. On the next page, you will see the record of investments. All of our accounts are interest-bearing. You can see the interest rates. Uh, as well, let's see. It had the month-to-date interest. So, it's got the year-to-date, as well as accumulated year-to-dates. There at the bottom. The bank reconciliation on the next page compared to the last page, the book reconciliation. You can see if you follow all the columns down, your revenues, well, excuse me, devils credits, and then receipts and expenses, a difference of $0, $0 between the two. That is the full treasures report. Uh, before I do the auditors report, I wanted to, I sent an email, and I think the law director said it would be best to ask at a council meeting. It was not the last council meeting, it was the meeting before. Uh, there was just a small typo in the minutes. Um, it repeats, it says credit report and credit report to be approved. Uh, the associate auditors report credit and check report. I think the second credit, it's supposed to say check report. Uh, I just wanted to ask the council, uh, for that small change.
That was in the last regular session minutes?
Uh, it was in the second meeting of September. It would have been my last auditors report. I can look up the date on here.
It's like the 23rd.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. President, I'll motion to amend the September 23rd minutes to reflect the, uh, what appears just to be the medical typos. Can you reserve a second? I'll second that.
And Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Gumpkin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'll start with the auditors report for September 2024. You'll see that revenues outpaced expenses. Um, you'll see it by a very large amount, actually. Let me pull up here, too. There's also paper copies in the room, if anybody would like some over that way. Uh, primarily due to the influx of pass-through project funds. You might remember a large amount of expenses the month before for the same reason. There's your year-to-date revenues and expenses there in the center of the screen at the bottom of the page on paper. Our fund balances at the end of the month, September, these are the unexpended balances. All fund combined, $6,929,264.72. You can see the general funds. Uh, combined tree funds, capital, water, and sewer. Not major changes from August, across the board, no major changes. The statement of cash position, this one never shows up on the screen, so if you're watching from home, there's a link you can click to see it. If you've got paper, you can see the statement of cash position on paper. It has all the fund balances for you there, as well as month-to-date and year-to-date revenue in and out of each fund. I got the question tonight from Council Vice President. Can the council, uh, change these funds or close them out when they're not being used? And the answer is yes, in fact. That would be quite helpful. For example, the parking meter fund, there are no parking meters now, so they don't have them for a long time. Uh, so if council wanted to close, um, old funds like that, that would be great. It would just take legislation. Um, which was a good question.
May I?
Yeah.
Uh, line 20, economic development. You've got a $5,000 expense there, could you tell me about what that was used for?
Yes, um. Hmm, without my expense report, I can't see what line it's coming out of, but I'm going to guess, or what's, that it was the fireworks, the $5,000 city contribution for the Fourth of July. There's only two major expenses out of that fund right now. Um, one is the Fourth of July expenses, the other is the Prairie Hills, um, sponsorship the city provides.
Okay, line item 220?
Yeah.
Permissive tax funds. Could you explain your version for that, please?
I can. Permissive tax funds, it's probably the only good thing any of us, I shouldn't say, because my brother works for the BMB, but, um, it's probably the only thing, good thing, the city gets out of when you go to renew your tax. Uh, in that expenses that you pay when you renew your tax, a small portion of it goes to the city, a small portion of the township and county, and the rest of the state. The permissive tax fund is where the city keeps those funds and spends from those funds for when you renew your tax. Um, it's required to go toward tree maintenance and repair.
That's a nice healthy balance with that in there.
It's not bad. Permissive tax 20, 25, $25,423. We get about $20,000 a year from that.
Line item 301, the dog park fund. Why haven't we seen any of the monies that we have allegedly gotten through grants?
Good question. So, actually, there was a conversation recently about that. Um, the city is working with DLZ on the final designs that we have to turn into the state that they will then, um, send those funds to us to spend on those designs.
So, it's our issue, not getting the money?
It's just a matter of, I don't know if it's an issue, it's just a matter of the project is not to the stage where we're spending money yet, um, because you can't ask for the money and then just hold it. You have to ask when you're shovel-ready, if that makes sense.
You said the city is working with DLZ, who? We are the city, aren't we?
Yes. I mean, yeah, no, I mean us, as, as far as the, the city hall.
But I mean, who's working within, uh, on the design, our department, board?
Oh, the dog park board.
Representatives of the city?
Yeah.
Serving in the board.
The committee has a really good idea of what they'd like to see there. Um, the funds are actually in addition to what they asked for. So, they were ready to spend $139,000, but we received a quarter million. So, basically, they're making sure that they expand that project to match the new funding. And once they are ready to submit those, the city can start moving.
Okay, we're no longer getting any opioid settlements, is that correct?
Uh, no, we will get those for, I don't know how many more years. I think they were 20 years long.
Okay, well, I didn't see any money in there.
That is because of the date. So, council opened up, so this is September 30th. Um, council opened up the opioid funds in September. So, I would have just opened them and be with deposit them, I think it was just beginning of October. So, you'll see those updated.
Okay.
I thought that K-9 fund, we don't have K-9. Just sit there, waiting for whatever the city decides. You might buy them.
Okay, line item 510, explain to me the insurance proceeded fund.
This one's a, this one's a fun one. So, this one almost never gets used. This is a fund set up for, in the state of Ohio, if you have house insurance, homeowner's insurance. When your house catches on fire, they are required to send part of the check to the city or the municipality where you live. Then, I believe it's 25%. The municipality is allowed to hold on to it until you have brought the destroyed home to code. So, that fund has bounds, has a balance, because at some point in the city's existence, some houses were never brought back to code after a fire.
It doesn't necessarily work for them.
But when they're brought back to code, do we give that money to the people? Yes.
Okay.
Yep. The last one we had, it was brought to code and we wrote the check out. That was two, uh, two of the years ago.
I have a question, that if this is the mobile home fire that occurred on East Franklin Street, that it's a deplorable place to drive by every day. At the mobile home, and Harry probably has an explanation, but I just, I can't, I don't understand why it's been allowed to continue to look the way it has.
I know which fire you're talking about, the one I was, I believe the one, the last one. I don't want to speak and be wrong, um, but I can provide a report on it. It wasn't a mobile home, I know that. The last one that we paid out. I don't know if the mobile home had insurance, I don't remember getting a check for that, that fire. I didn't, I didn't think, I didn't think so.
I'm getting close.
Okay. No, I like this. Five years, nobody's asked me about the 510 funds.
Line item 715?
Yes.
Is this money that's external or internal?
Ooh, this is a credit memo fund. It's my least favorite fund. It's because it's a little bit of both. So, this is money people have paid over and above what they owe on their utility bill. And this is an accounting mechanism, because the state says you can't set those funds into your water, sewer, or trash fund, because you haven't charged them for it yet. So, how can I put your extra water money in my, in the city's water fund if I haven't billed you that amount? So, you have to create a credit fund, and you're actually not allowed to spend from that fund. Um, because what happens is, is that when I bill you your water and sewer charges, the money transfers from credit memo to water and sewer. And then it becomes the city's money. I know that's a little...
Say that again? Say that one more time.
It holds in the credit memo fund. The city's not allowed to touch it.
Right.
When I bill, so say you have a hundred dollar credit. Um, and I'm glad we're talking about this, because there was some nice misinformation on Facebook about utility bills today. And, um, there was misinformation about charges not being accurate. Not only can I show you the charges are accurate, every case, but we, we follow the rules so closely that when you pay over your bill, let's say it's a hundred dollars over, we separate that money and we don't allow the city, the departments to spend it. But if your next bill is a hundred dollars, we then trade, so in other, other words, it hits zero. Plus a hundred, negative hundred.
So, you do credit back to the, uh, to the overage that was, that we paid?
Yes, before the bill is sent out. And then the money transfers to the water and sewer fund. And if it was only $50, we'd only transfer $50.
So, so this fund here that, uh, that Sonic was talking about has, what, 13?
The credit?
17,000? Yeah, it has a total of 13,000, what is $50? What happens to that if no one, I mean, that's sitting there for a reason. Yes, no one evidently has, are giving their money back. I mean, that should balance out at some point, shouldn't it? If that's the case that you're talking about.
It would only balance out under the assumption that people close their utility bills down to zero. So, we have accounts, I can think of one account in particular, somebody has a thousand dollar credit on. They just keep paying every month, even though they're way ahead.
Oh. Is that what this is?
Are they aware of it?
They are aware. It's a large landowner, actually.
Oh, okay.
Um, so they, they want that credit, and if they were to close that account, sell that house, we'd write a refund check out of the credit memo fund, back to the customer. Good questions. It's also my least favorite fund, because it's technically an accounting moment, but it's also technically not, so that we have to track it externally, even though it's been paid to us.
Right.
Anyway, I, I don't mind doing the work, it's just a little extra footwork.
Uh, line item 925, American Rescue Plan, we have $32,000 and some odd money in there. We have to get rid of that before December 31st.
That's right.
Have we got something in the plan?
Uh, that is my understanding. There is the Mobile Work Order Program, and also there's a request from the water plant, I mean, um, excuse me, for repairs, and the rescue plan is primarily set aside for utility upgrades. So, that question's kind of the city manager's, I don't want to put words in his mouth.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've got another one.
Um, but if the city manager agrees with the water plant director in the end, that's where that will likely, the rest of it will go. That's good, that was good.
Thank you.
It provided a few teachable moments.
Well, I have a teachable moment.
Oh, yes.
Um, on the dog park fund, the last two meetings of the dog park group have been canceled.
Oh.
And nothing has happened, and $136,000 is all they think they've got, because the 200, the other monies seem to, someone mentioned that they could be spent for other projects in the city of Nelsonville, and that will be decided at a later time.
Oh, thank you. Um, well, I don't, I don't know all the circumstances behind that, but I'm sure the state will want it to go to the dog park. That'd be my advice to council.
That was according to the last, the city manager that's on a lead, that it will be for other things happening around the city of Nelsonville. That's what he said.
I heard council say, they said we would spend the whole part of it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, my, yeah, my advice, so the state wanted to give a quarter million to the dog park. We should go to the dog park.
Right, and council has approved no other projects with that.
No.
We'll have no other plans to, no, there we go.
All right, those are good questions. Let's see if I can get through, um, let's see where, okay. Credit card report is very short this month, it's on the screen, as well as on paper. Usually, you see several dozen transactions. This month, you'll see quite fewer, just a few expenses, including postage for certified mail, some collared water expenses for what I believe was fire department equipment for hydrants. Was waiting for a correction if that was wrong. And Microsoft for the city's, uh, Microsoft cost. You'll see a refund from the Red Cross, that was sales tax. A lot of vendors charge sales tax upfront. You have to request it, and they get around, giving it to you three months later, so that's what that is there. Sales tax refunds. There's a check report in everybody's packet. These are the checks from September 1st. There's a date on it here somewhere, September 1st through Friday. Um, it actually includes checks sent and checks not sent yet. So, you guys are seeing some stuff ahead of time, which was my goal in providing this report. And, that brings me to final items. Uh, since the last meeting, I was at the municipal, excuse me, Government Finance Officers of Ohio Conference in Training, as well as Software Solutions Conference and Training with two other staff members. Um, I also took, well, at those trainings, I took training on payroll processing, audit compliance, which we were just talking about, on all of this fun stuff. Customer service, leadership, tax collection, and a lot more. I completed mandatory ethics and sunshine law trainings, which all fiscal officers and elected officers must undergo every term, um, which makes me done, or trained for the term, um, at least statutory requirement. Uh, we are rounding the corner on electronic mobile work orders. Uh, Jason, I couldn't make it tonight, but he might have spoken on it if he was reporting. We're going to have an all-electronic work order system, meaning instead of giving a piece of paper to an employee to please go check your water meter, which by the way, are accurate, and have serial numbers, not just one, they have two that we verify, and we can verify their geographic location. Okay? There was other misinformation posted on Facebook today. But instead of sending a piece of paper to an employee, which might get lost, might get wet, might get muddy, who knows what happens? They get shuffled so much that you lose them, they're going to be electronic, they're going to go to an iPad, and the employee might be working on something else. He comes back to the truck when he's done, and he sees he has three requests to check on Nancy's and some other folks's, Sue's and Stuart's meters, because they hear running water, and they don't have to come back here to do it. We have a live date.
We're running water?
Which I believe is November 19th. Uh, there's a report here for the pool report, um, which was requested by council. These are expenses and revenues for the pool. You'll notice, uh, the revenues at just over $100,000, expenses at around $119,000. That does not include pool repairs. The original goal of the income tax split to the rec funds was to provide the funds for repairs to the pool. That was council's goal, at least as I interpreted it. Um, the income tax subsidizes the operation of the day, daily, excuse me, day-to-day operations at the pool. Um, but as you can see, the pool repairs out of $300 funded, $0. So, um, the prices, as well as attendance, is not, um, mathematically adding up to a situation where we can do major pool repairs with those funds. There's also a retro pay report requested by council at the last meeting. Um, on the subject of the contracts, I have a list here. I'm really close, I promise, everybody. I'm almost done. A list here, three firefighters with trainings. These are, you saw these at the last council meeting, where police officers had cert certifications or assignments under the contracts. This is section 10, Article 23. These were given by the fire chief. Um, the contracts are kind of written to want to give both chiefs the discretion to do these periods. That's what it seems like. Unfortunately, as I told both chiefs, that's not possible. Um, council has to set all compensation and make all compensation changes. So, I'm putting this in front of council, uh, for their review and approval on this report. Last thing is, I would encourage residents to support the community, not tear it down, and, uh, support things like the street lending on Tuesday.
The what?
The street lending. Any questions?
I've got one.
Yes.
So, we put in here on your statement, uh, your cash position, can we put down for your vacant property, um, you know, what we collect, the vacant properties, can we start, you know, that's what I'm, we have it on the books here, and, and I, start, you know, collecting, you know, properties that are vacant. We put that out there, and can we go ahead and put, you know, where you collect $30, around these individuals? Can we get that, those two line items? So, we can break those down?
I think so. I can pull it on the revenue report. On that cash statement, council would have to create a fund to separate, to make it show up on this report. Um, but on the revenue report...
Whatever report.
Um. Yes, I'll check it tomorrow. I'm not sure if both of them are segregated, but I'll check and see if they are, and if they aren't. We can do it.
All right, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other citizens' questions? Any council questions? Um, I do have a couple.
Oh, we have a couple, nevermind.
Thank you for the pool report.
Yes.
And tentatively, we've set a finance committee meeting for Wednesday at 6:00.
Okay.
And, um, I think that was all I have, other than the fact that the pool is looking at some pretty expensive, uh, cost of repairs going into next year. And it's going to be a challenge to find the money for that. Other than that, that's all I have.
Anyone else? I would just ask the approval, uh, just say auditors credit and check report specifically. And you guys go to approve these reports.
Uh, Mr. President, I'll motion to, that we, uh, accept the September 2024 treasures report.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Um, Taylor?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. President, I'll also, um, motion that we accept the Nelsonville City Auditors Report. Include, can I include this?
Yeah.
Okay. Including the, uh, the monthly check report and, um, monthly...
Credit card.
Credit card report, yes. I'll say it.
Mr. Doob?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Gumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Real quick. I've always been told, and maybe since Sue's here, she'll probably remember, or Betty Jo, that when the pool was originally funded, there was a overage of some, of a, of money that was set aside for repairs on that pool when it was funded, like, was it like seven? How much was it, quarter? Do you remember? Was it $750,000? That's been a long time ago, though, yeah. I don't know if there was. We've done some repairs, and I don't know if we used that fund, that's what it's called, yeah, probably.
No.
It wasn't?
The only thing that we had was an extra $25,000, but it went into, I think it was the recreation fund, and it was supposed to be used for like landscaping and some of the extra stuff. But from my standpoint, I never had, um, but the, the tax, the income tax was increased by a quarter of a percent, and that money all had to go in the pool fund, if that's what maybe you're thinking of.
That's probably it.
Yeah, because it was 1.50, and it went up to 1.75.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving on to citizens' comments, we ask that you give your name, and you have three minutes. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes. That's Sue Powell, um, East Washington Street in Nelsonville. Um, this is all positive, but I want to talk about Election Day next Tuesday and the issue 23, because as you all know... twenty-three, because as you all know, I'm very, very, very supportive of the charter. I've worked here for twelve years, um, I know what's charter and what's not. So I've tried to answer a lot of questions, um, and I've also done some research. And, you know, people are still trying to compare us to Athens and Logan. Can't do that, you just can't do that. They're, uh, they're different entities completely, they're a different size, they're a different makeup, um, they get, you know, more revenue, they have more people involved, and probably maybe, I don't know what you'd say, it's a smoother operation, they never had a reason, I guess, to go to charter. And that leads me to the fact that I did some research for Ohio, and Ohio has, and this is a few years old, a hundred and eighty-eight cities that are under charter. Uh, and if you include villages, uh, and there's two counties that are also under charter, it goes up to about over three hundred, about three hundred and five to three hundred and ten. There's never been a conversion back to a statutory former government that I could find. I don't know if Mr. Rowe has done any research on that, but I could not find any town, uh, city that is referred back to, um, the, the mayor's former government. I, you know, I've also had, well, you don't understand, to me, they said, you don't understand that they're hiding things, they're, it's a lot deeper than you think, they're hiding things. Okay, that's people, that's not charter. I don't try to answer who's doing what, but everything they bring up is people. And I heard this morning on the radio, um, a lady made the comment, a positive comment, said, let the people decide which kind of government, which is what we're doing. But I don't think they also understand that if you go back to a mayor's former government, the people are out of it. You're, you, we have to revert back to state laws, and either the state law tells us what to do, if you don't like it, it's too bad, because that's what we have to function under. Where the charter is, we're really responsible for writing that charter and developing our own flow of funds, or flow of laws. A lot of people said, will say, wouldn't you just like those to vote for mayor? Wouldn't you like to vote for mayor? And I have to say no, and then I have to say why. I think there's a solution. If people vote no on Tuesday, I think there's a solution that both sides could be, uh, happy. The charter needs revised, the charter needs updated, there's, I don't think anybody would not question that. And we can clarify some things that people are, not we, I'm, I'm just making this as an opinion, um, but things could be clarified in that charter that maybe are, uh, a conflict today. If you want to vote for a mayor, the charter can make the president or the mayor where Mr. Clements is sitting, that can be a elected official. You know, you can vote for the mayor under charter, and that would be the job now. If there's three people running for that job, it doesn't mean the other two automatically get on council. It means that whoever the winner is, they will be the mayor, and, and more of a ceremonial, maybe, type of mayor than we have now. And then you still have a city manager running the day-to-day operation. That's kind of what I'm thinking. And I just want people that, before they press yes or no, to think, do I really understand what is a people function that maybe needs clarified, straightened out, fixed, trained, you know, uh, versus what the type of government we run? The charter is a newer form of government. The charter, a, a council is really supposed to have less authority under a charter than they do under statutory. Now, somebody said to me, yeah, but all the problems start with the ma, start with the mayor. It's true under statutory, the mayor can veto whatever council puts out. But council can o, also override that veto with a vote of five. So, you know, it, it's still, the, the power is there. But the charter is a newer form of government, we can, it can be written, updated, to fit the city of Nelsonville. Uh, there's guidelines, I think, from the state, um, but, you know, Joe worked in North Carolina. That whole state is practically all charter. They, they'll, it's a newer form of government, you can write it for your city.
I'm sorry, you're running over, way over time. We've allowed, I'm sorry. Thank you. Anyone else?
So I have a rule, I just have two things. One, um, I would hope that there could be a street meeting where they would talk about a four-way stop around the square. I talked to three people, and I'd be happy, they said I could share their name, but I won't do it unless you ask me after council. But they have, people are not stopping at the stop signs, and they're going through, and they're getting close to getting hit, and they're not happy. And they, they're thinking, if perhaps all four were stops, they'd have a better chance of everybody stopping when they should. One of the stop signs is way back, and if you have a big truck in front of it, you can't see it. Number two is about our beautiful, uh, red fire truck. You know, that thing weighs forty-six thousand pounds. That's a lot of vehicle, you don't want to step in front of it. Uh, secondly, one of my friends, uh, after this was purchased by the city, got a call from her insurance company, and because the ISO we have is now three, she got her rates reduced by five hundred dollars a year. That's huge. She didn't even have to ask them, they called her. And the last one is just something I read on the Independent, that I just would like some clarification, uh, where it stated about the reason that Jimmy was on this lead, and is there any truth to the story that they printed?
I have, are there any articles?
Okay, well, I, if you haven't read it, I'm not gonna, I didn't...
It's on NBC Four in Columbus website.
Where did they get the information? I had to get it from someone.
They've had to do public service requests.
Public requests.
Public records.
It sounded like the, of the woman that's the, uh, lawyer was involved with some of the information. I'm not saying anymore, because I can't speak to it, it just was interesting, that's all I have to say. I think you ought to check into it, thank you.
Stuart Brooks, one twenty-three East Columbus Street. Might have a solution to help with the pool. I'm gonna go talk a little bit about vacant properties. And, uh, I had a nice, uh, chat today, it was very nice, with, uh, with our acting city mayor, and with, uh, with Mr. Bill Riggar, who I know very well. And we were asking about vacant properties, and I would like to see us go forward and start to take this resolution that we have on the books and put it to youth, youth. I've got a piece property on Conner Street, you know, just pass this, pass this around Gilite. And that's the property there. And then here's a gentleman that owned it out of Athens with a six hundred thousand dollar home. So this is real, folks, uh, we, we need to try to fix this. I have another one on Clinton Street here, that's been here for quite some time. I'm not gonna go names, I don't care less really who owns them, they just need to be, they need to be taken into small claims court, and we need to start the process. This house is about, well, twenty feet from that home here. This is a bed and breakfast, they're selling this house because they can't seem to go further with their bed and breakfast because of what they have here, and they have the same problem, uh, on Conner Street. So these are some of the things that, 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 uh, the citizens are, are, are starting to see. And I, I think it would be nice if we could help maybe Mr. Riggar down the road to start this process, to help him start to take and identify the properties, even with our fire chief, if we could, to start take these properties, and start to put them in, uh, the, the residence that was, that, that we passed, which says whether it's a hundred dollars, uh, uh, the first year, and it doubled, and it tripled, you start to get somebody a bill for like sixteen hundred dollars a year for properties that's just sitting there, um, you're gonna get their attention. Now, we said, and we said, we're not Athens, we're not Logan, I understand that, but if this property was sitting in Athens, I don't think it would be, it's been sitting there, some of these properties have been sitting there a long time, ten to fifteen years. If they're sitting beside your property, your property value goes way down. So I just asked the, the city, and, and I, I asked our, our city manager, and he, we talked about if we could go forward and start to break this out, and start to go forward, and start to identify these properties, and start what we have on the books. I'm not asking for anything different, this is what was voted in, and we would take these properties and start the, um, the procedure, start them back into our court system we have here, looks like it's gonna start the first of the year, and, you know, they don't want to do something with them, then let's just start to pile on, you know, what the fines are, and see if that doesn't get their attention. There's another piece of property, which is, uh, you gotta put that, put that on Chestnut Street, um, which we have. I forgot the, wrote down what the address was, but it's sitting there, and it's in portable shape. The front doors are actually locked on the outside with padlocks, front porch is falling off. We have to identify this, we have to start this immediately. And I think if we do this, and, and the breakout with the code for the people who pay their thirty dollars for every rental, maybe at the end of the year, we, we raise a hundred thousand dollars, maybe go to the pool. Maybe, but we don't know until we, we start and classing the property. These properties have got to be cleaned up, they have to be, or you're kidding yourself. This town, this town looks as bad as I've seen it when it comes to some properties, a lot of them. I'd be more than glad to go around and point them out with, uh, Mr. Riggar, or with our fire chief, and I'm sure the fire chief knows we're ninety-nine percent of them are. So I just asked council to please do this, and I really appreciate you breaking this out, so now we can start to look at, you know, who's not paying their fair share. Any questions?
Yeah, I'll ask you a question, Mr. Brooks. So how long do you think this problem has existed?
In this town?
Yes.
Oh, well, this is one house here, if I've been there fifteen years, I'd say it's existed for quite some time, but not to the extent it is today. If you're asking me a question, not when I was on city council, not I've lived here for seventy-three years, it's as worse as I've seen in this town today.
Have you asked for it to be addressed prior to now? In the past five, ten, fifteen years?
Yes, I have.
Okay, then what happened?
Nothing.
Okay. So currently, we are looking into these issues. We're trying to figure out how to expand the code enforcement on this. It's a question of finding the money to do so. And other questions have come up about it also.
Okay. Have you had one person on code enforcement for vacant property? Have you collected?
I can't answer that, I don't do the day-to-day operations, nobody on council does. The administration handles that.
Okay. How about asking the administration, and getting back with folks in Nelsonville?
We have asked the administration, and they are looking into what we can do to expand and, and address these issues. But also, the land bank has been involved in these issues also.
Land bank is, and some of them, I've seen that, but then this property that is on Conner Street...
So I want to address, there is a misconception that this current council is not doing anything about it, which is horrible.
That's not coming from me.
I didn't say it was.
Okay, I just want to make that clear.
And so do I.
Okay, you have, but I'm gonna make it clear that the, that what we have in this town today are unacceptable with properties, you wouldn't want these properties beside you.
I don't disagree with anything you're saying.
Okay, so let's act on it, it's you, I didn't put it in the law, I did not do that.
I didn't either.
Somebody did in the last, what, five years, six years?
I don't know when it was, I put one.
I think that's right.
But I was on the charter committee when Title Thirty-One was looked at, and put together, brought the council, it was passed, and then that was put on the ballot to defeat it, and it happened. So our current, uh, rental code is very lacking in the T, and actually, um, concerning rentals, it's only inspections are really done by complaint, there is no plan in place to do annual or biannual inspections of rental properties.
My understanding was the thirty dollars that I paid...
That was an inspection fee, though.
That's not...
That helps fund the code enforcement officer.
Correct.
And that's something that we should put in. Not, not, I don't, I think the part was that I, maybe I misunderstood, was personal property, or where you live, not rentals. They didn't want to pass it for your personal, your home.
It didn't, it wouldn't inspect personal homes, that was a miss, that was a misconception.
Well, I couldn't tell you what the public, I didn't say I agree with it, I just said I did, I'm just saying that that's actually what I hear, and that's what the public's thinking. So...
Well, I can state for a fact that you did not hear that from a council member that's currently on council. I can tell you who told you that, and who told everybody else in that, that community. And the, the fact is, he's the same gentleman, while sitting on council while we were trying to pass Title Thirty-One, raised his hand in a public meeting and offered to pay the fifty dollars, make a referend, you know, referendum, so I want to go around and get the petition signed, which to me, sounds like an ethical violation, but, um, no, it was never pursued. I was for Title Thirty-One, and even though I'm called a slumlord on...
I didn't know you're a slumlord.
You have called me a slumlord.
No, I have not.
But I'm just stating, but I'm just stating that is...
That is an absolute lie.
I'm just stating, I'm just stating, I was for Title Thirty-One, and I voted for Title Thirty-One, because we need better code enforcement, we need more teeth in this community, but, you know, we get painted in the bad light, property owners, you know, but yet, you have someone going around telling, you know, lies and misconceptions, and we, you know, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, that's a person you have to deal with.
Deal with them constantly.
Okay, but that's not me. How many houses, you know, how many houses in this town today are vacant?
I don't have...
In city assets? I don't know either.
There are vacant houses in this community that are not old, that are not used as rental properties too. There are other people that own houses in this community that don't rent them and don't pay the rental fee, and they're vacant, yeah.
But they should, that we have, now that we have our own court system going the first of the year, they should be brought into court, and they should be fine compared to what are, we have on our books today. That's the rental property, not the personal property.
Rental property should be...
That'd be anybody's property. Well, I, I mean, if you...
I think, I think what I heard when this thing came up a few years ago, was that you cannot do this with private property houses, that you do it with rental...
That's what the article for Title Thirty-One, Title Thirty-One...
Right, right.
You're correct.
And it passed, right?
Planning, Planning Commission spent almost two years working on that. Our fire chief helped provide a lot of code from the International Book of Code for that, for Title Thirty-One. It needs, I'll make the motion right now, let's bring it to the next council meeting, because it's already written, I think we put it back to Planning Commission, but I would override that and ask if we just bring it back to the next council meeting.
Yeah, who's the key to it, I have a problem with that.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna suggest the first step, we put it in Planning and Development Committee, they can make the recommendation to bring it with both councils, and reintroduce it as an ordinance.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thanks for your...
Tuesday, scoundrels, mate.
Any other citizens' comments? I gotta think about people's, uh... Okay, if there's no one else, we'll move on to business and organizational comments. Committee, any committees meet since the last town, I believe so? Department updates, I believe Chief Barber.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to, before Harry starts, I just wanted to, to alert everybody that we're speaking of code enforcement. Uh, I have Joe Posey, you may have seen it in the emails, coming down, and I think it's on the nineteenth of, the fifteenth of November, I don't have my phone here. But he's coming down with all his gaggle of code enforcement and, um, and, uh, people that can help, I spoke on this before, people that can help the violators get their houses up to code. He's coming down to, uh, Hocking College, or the Lodge at Hocking College. And we're having the symposium down there on November the, it's either the fifteenth or the nineteenth. I'll have my.
It's, it's the fifteenth.
It's the fifteenth, yeah. You're going? Okay, yeah, it's the fifteenth. There's a nice, aren't there? Yeah, so, uh, we've got them coming down here. There'll be a lot of people coming. I, I imagine fifty.
At least.
Uh, so, yeah, and that's on November the fifteenth. I just want to bring that up before, for, uh.
And what, what is the discussion for that?
It's about, uh, code enforcement, it's about properties, it's about, uh, uh, agencies that can help if your property gets code enforced a violation. Uh, Habcap, Habitat for Humanity, just all kind of organizations come and offer their assistance to the code enforcements, so the code enforcement officers can tell them, you can have this done. Here's the agency that can help you get this violation under control.
So has any of this been sent to the city administration?
I put it on, yeah.
Yeah, I've seen it already.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes. Sorry, Harry.
Go ahead.
All right, uh, well, the, what Paul was talking about was, uh, the International Property Maintenance Code. So the International Property Maintenance Code is a national fair to already vetted by attorneys. That was something that Title Thirty-One was looking at, enforcing. It's not something that the city had to worry that it would be unconscionable providing somebody's rights because International Property Maintenance Code is already vetted by, uh, statewide and nationwide. So the, the current ruling of International Property Maintenance Code is not a matter of, of, of. Uh, so for the update, um, still partnering with Red Cross or Swiss Defense installed. Again, remember, these have to be installed by, uh, the firefighters. Yeah, the stuff with the homes, prompt the paperwork through Red Cross, and actually do the installs. Uh, these are free. There's, there's no charge at the end user. Uh, the reason why we have to install a health paperwork is because they have to prove that their grant is working in the communities. Uh, fire prevention this year, the motto to the state was fire alarms, make them work for you. So we did a lot of teaching, prevention with kids. This year, during the week of the fifteenth, we were able to interact with all students, kindergarten through fifth grade at the school. Uh, fire hazard testing is still being conducted right now. I think we're up testing some today. Uh, overdose calls, we have an update this year. We're working on trying to get compiled data right now with Athens County, nine oh one, the health department. Um, we, certain drugs, we're not seeing overdose is now, now, but we have had an update this year. We're looking, that's anticipated to rise through the holiday season as every year. I should, I will have more numbers on that as myself and the nine oh one officers to get these compiled. Uh, since last update, we've had two brush fires and one structure fire. This last update to my office, myself has performed, uh, two foster home inspections for neighboring fire departments. Foster homes and adoption inspections have to be done by certified fire safety strikers. A lot of departments don't have those. So neighboring departments will call for help, uh, for assistance when they need to cut this stuff down. So it's either my office or someone that has my certification will the state fire marshal office. Uh, we're still in extreme drought conditions right now. We're in the fall fire season as well. The open ban, uh, the, the open flame ban through the marshal office has been lifted. But we still have a unique fire danger right now. So any type of burn permits or any type of burning is looked at on a day, by day basis. Uh, this coming Saturday, many of our members will be participating in order and search and rescue training events. Uh, this training will take place in your county, along with fire department and involve several different fire departments. This training is a spinoff of workover response or Bailey Trail response. So a lot of our departments have received, uh, rescue equipment and tools for response of Bailey Trail system. Same elsewhere currently does not have a Bailey Trail system section that touches our jurisdiction. Uh, but the reason why we're getting equipment from this is because if we have a neighboring partner that responds to the Bailey Trail system, because we are in a certified, probably going to be responding. So we're getting equipment from that. So our partners have practical training events, and you can, that, that group. Uh, trick or treat, thirty-first, around six thirty to seven thirty. Will have trucks or vehicles be placed out throughout town. Another piece of program will have, uh, cruiser placed out throughout town as well. If anybody needs assistance, lost, or injured, please reach out to any of the police officers and firefighters that you see in town. Uh, our training, our trick or treat is the same time as locals. And your township will have their firefighters and book local up. So if anybody needs anything, make sure, make sure they reach out to firefighter or police officer with trucks and cars, not somebody that's dressed up. Um, on the twelfth, we performed a rescue of a child that was wedged in the fork of a big second oak tree. Uh, this was a seven to nine-year-old, uh, child. And we did not perform rescue efficiently with the rescue tools that we had here at the fire department. So I actually called in your township fire department airbag system that they had. And we were able to, to go successfully free the child from the tree without injury. And I will tell you that the next morning, I read a grant for airbag system. So I'm waiting on that grant right now. It's in process. Um, new twenty fifty-one has been delivered. It is in station right now. We are now working on getting radios and equipment installed in that truck. It'll take likely at least three weeks probably to get it in service. I'm working on radio equipment and mounting equipment right now. Uh, thank you to, uh, the presence that we had in council during that event. I realize that we're during the day, or probably a lot of people shouldn't show up. This is the soonest that, uh, they can make delivery of the truck. And the reason why we hop on that is sooner we get the truck, the sooner I can start to make equipment out. And I want to thank Starbuck Barbecue for catering. Without their generosity, I would have been putting the bill on the end of that, so that's pretty awesome. I appreciate that right now.
Any questions for Chief Barber?
Once again, thank you for all you do for our city.
No, thank you for this court. It means a lot. Uh, without council and, uh, city manager's support.
Chief, I have a question. Um, concerning entrance into the fire department. You have to go through the door here in the, in the building, correct? Buzz in to go into the fire department?
Yeah, unless the bays are open, you guys in the bay.
So if the bays are open and someone walks in, is, is that less than the security of the fire department?
If the bays are open, the, the bay doors are open, the firefighters are in the bay. If we're not in the bay, the bay doors aren't open. I have drug license, so the station is secured. So if we're not in the bay working, uh, the bay doors are hanging up. But it's a public building, so if we're in the bay working and somebody shows up, like, normally you can.
Thank you.
I've got a code report as well.
I'm sorry?
I have the code report as well.
Okay, great, go ahead.
So for the month of October, so far there have been eighteen notice of violations sent out. I guess this includes some September as well, so it looks like it's the second half of September and then all of this month so far. Eighteen code violation notices have been sent out. Six lot division permits. Six street walking permits, two new contractor registration permits, three zoning permits, two rental permits, one new vendor permit, one lot transfer permit, two disability sign permits, two dumpster permits, and then four vacant property permits. And in total for the year, there have been four hundred and ninety-four rental permits submitted to the city.
How would these zone?
Uh, it doesn't cover, the zoning permits kind of cover a broader range of material, some of this zoning and stuff like that, the required zoning.
Any questions?
I, I have a quick question. What is a street walking? I was encouraged to ask this.
I didn't see anyone talking to you, Jillian.
Yeah, I don't know.
You don't know what it is either? Okay.
Was it, uh, like to block the square when they have like.
Blocking, blocking. Hey, we'll charge you for a license for everything in this kind of thing.
Well, I was just wondering if we have any business that you can take a business back. Thank you, sorry.
Okay, moving on to ordinances for second reading, uh, ordinance eighty-four twenty-four.
An ordinance establishing a scheduled court cost for Nelsonville Mayor's Court. And repealing ordinance forty-six dash twenty-four. Whereas council has established Nelsonville Mayor's Court adhering such cases as followed in the jurisdiction under Ohio law for a mayor's court for the city of Nelsonville. Whereas council had by ordinance forty-six dash twenty-four previously set a scheduled court cost for Nelsonville Mayor's Court. Whereas the chief of Nelsonville Police Department has recommended that the schedule of court costs be adjusted. Whereas there is a need for council to establish a revised and updated schedule of court costs for Nelsonville Mayor's Court. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The schedule of court costs for Nelsonville Mayor's Court as set forth in Exhibit A is hereby adopted by council. The mayor's court clerk shall make a schedule of court costs available to any person who requests a copy. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and in all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. Ordinance forty-six dash twenty-four is hereby repealed in its entirety. This ordinance shall be effective at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council, I'm sorry, on second reading the twentieth day of October, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Salute.
Salute.
Um, any citizens' comments on adoption? Any council discussion on adoption?
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, we've had a mayor's court and is the, are these the prices that we're charging at the mayor's court? The first mayor's court that we had, or are these revised?
Revised.
Revised. There, but, but you haven't charged a different price to somebody in the first one that's on this page, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Court call the role on adoption?
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Big?
Yes. Ordinance eighty-four twenty-four passed. Uh, ordinance eighty-five twenty-four, second reading.
And ordinance establishing a schedule of fine for Nelsonville Mayor's Court and repealing ordinance eighty-one dash twenty-four. Whereas council has established Nelsonville Mayor's Court adhering such cases as followed in the jurisdiction under Ohio law for a mayor's court for the city of Nelsonville. Whereas council had by ordinance eighty-one dash twenty-four previously set a scheduled fine for Nelsonville Mayor's Court. Whereas the chief of the Nelsonville Police Department has recommended that the fines in the schedule of fines be adjusted to improve the administration of Nelsonville Mayor's Court. Whereas there is a need for council to establish a revised and updated schedule of fines for Nelsonville Mayor's Court. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The schedule of fines for Nelsonville Mayor's Court as set forth in Exhibit A is hereby adopted by council. The mayor's court clerk shall make a schedule of fines available to any person who requests a copy. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirement. This ordinance shall not be construed to amend any law or fine previously enacted by separate ordinance of council. Or shall any part of this ordinance be construed as impairing or limiting council's authority to amend any law or fine for any offense prohibited by law. Ordinance eighty-one dash twenty-four is hereby repealed in its entirety. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading, the eleventh day of November, two thousand twenty-four.
Uh, motion to adopt? Second. Any citizens' comment? Any council discussion? Court call the role on adoption?
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Yeah, ordinance eighty-six twenty-four, someone would introduce it.
An ordinance to authorize payment of the city of Nelsonville's membership dues to the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia. Whereas by ordinance twenty-three dash nineteen, council authorized the city's membership in the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, Regional Council of Governments. Whereas the city was a founding member of ORCA. Whereas the city's membership dues will soon become due and ordinance twenty-three dash nineteen requires that council approve and authorize payment of any membership dues by separate ordinance of council. Whereas council wishes to approve and authorize payment of current membership dues. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Council hereby authorizes and approves payment of the city's membership dues for the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, Regional Council of Governments in the amount up to five thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars. City manager and city auditor shall take all steps necessary to submit payment to ORCA of the city's membership fee, provided that ORCA submits to the city an invoice for which the amount specified in Section One. The city auditor shall take all steps necessary under law to arrange for appropriations of funds for the payments authorized and directed by council herein. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as authorizing any expenditure of funds or as appropriating any expenditure of funds other than as specifically and expressly authorized or appropriated herein. City council finds, hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in meetings open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading, the eleventh day of November, two thousand twenty-four.
Uh, resolution twenty-three nineteen, if someone would like to introduce it, or introduce it?
Uh, resolution commending Southeastern Ohio Young Allies Against Bullying for their efforts to raise awareness about mental health and to advocate against bullying. Whereas awareness needs to be brought to the top, needs to be brought to the topic of mental health and bullying and a social problem that needs to be fully eradicated for the betterment of society and for our youth. Whereas Southeastern Ohio Young Allies Against Bullying is an organization at the forefront of raising awareness about mental health and advocating against bullying. Whereas Southeastern Ohio Young Allies Against Bullying was founded in two thousand twenty-three under the leadership of Zach Hoffman and recently celebrated its one-year anniversary. Whereas ORC five point two-two-nine-six has designated the month of September as School Bullying Prevention Awareness Month to highlight the policies prohibiting. to highlight the policies prohibiting harassment, intimidation or bullying adopted by schools in the state and the required notice of those policies sent to parents and guardians annually. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City council hereby commends Southeastern Ohio Young Allies Against Bullying and Zach Hoffman for their continued dedicated work to raise awareness about mental health and to advocate against bullying. The city manager is hereby instructed to provide a copy of this resolution and a letter of recommendation to Mister, I'm sorry, a letter of commendation to Mister Hoffman. City council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law duly adopted by council on first reading the twenty-eighth day of October, two thousand twenty-four.
Do you remember the young man that sat on council one night?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
That's him.
That's him.
Yep, that's him.
That's cool.
Um, motion to adopt?
Salute.
Second. Any citizens' comments?
Just a question, how are they going to handle this or how do they go promote? Anybody know?
I think it's an ongoing program that
Pardon?
It's an ongoing program that he's constantly running, it's not a work.
Are they going into the schools and?
He's actually a student at Nelsonville York. So he's actually working from the inside.
Because I've just been reading, you know, about the school situation.
It's, it's an awful problem, yeah.
I think this is just a way that we can create more awareness about the situation.
Okay, um. For call the role?
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Ms. Sonne? Yes.
Resolution twenty-three twenty, if someone would introduce it.
Uh, introduce it.
Resolution proving and adopting the Solid Waste Management Plan as established by the Athens-Hawking Solid Waste District. Whereas the city of Nelsonville is located in Athens County, Ohio and within the Athens Hawking Solid Waste District. Whereas in accordance with ORC three-seven-three-four-point-five-three, three-seven-three-four-point-five-four and three-seven-three-four-point-five-five, the Athens-Hawking Solid Waste District Parliament Committee prepared and adopted a final draft of the Solid Waste Management Plan for two thousand twenty-five to two thousand forty. Whereas the Athens-Hawking Solid Waste District has provided a copy of the adopted Solid Waste Management Plan for ratification reach of the legislative authorities in the district, including council of the city of Nelsonville. Whereas council must decide whether it approves of the final draft of the Solid Waste Management Plan within ninety days of the city's receipt of the final draft. Whereas the city received a copy of the final draft on September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas council determines it is in the best interest of the city to approve the final draft of the Solid Waste Management Plan. Whereas it is in the best interest of the city for the city to implement and comply with the provisions of the Solid Waste Management Plan. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City council hereby approves and adopts the final draft of the Solid Waste Management Plan as prepared and adopted by the Athens-Hawking Solid Waste District Policy Committee. A copy of the Solid Waste Management Plan is incorporated herein by reference coming into today. City manager is hereby instructed to take all steps reasonably necessary to implement, I'm sorry, to implement the Solid Waste Management Plan within the city of Nelsonville and to ensure compliance with the provisions of the Solid Waste Management Plan. The clerk is directed to send the district a copy, a certified copy of this resolution via mail to the attention of Jane Forrest Redfern, Director, Athens-Hawking Solid Waste District, P.O. six ninety-three, Athens, Ohio, four five seven oh one. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law duly adopted by council on first reading the twenty-eighth day of October, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to adopt?
Salute.
Second. Any citizens' comments? Um, Mr. Forrest, for instance, you have any comments?
I just want to thank, um, all of you for, um, your comments and input, um, on the solid waste management plan. Um, I've been here quite a few times this year on various topics, um. But the solid waste district, um, as you know, is governed by the county commissioners of both counties and the policy committee is made up of the a commissioner, the health commissioner, the mayor of the largest city, township representative, environmental representative, business representative, and a general interest. So there are fifteen people that worked for the last eighteen months to develop the plan. Basically, what we've determined is that over the next fifteen years, there's plenty of landfill space for the district, um, uh, for our waste, which is the whole reason for the plan. And then secondly, to, um, establish, uh, plans for the twenty-five percent we do. We have twenty-two drop-off, um, locations throughout the district which generates fourteen hundred tons of household recycling. Um, it's the number one, um, entity in the district that generates, um, recycling. We also have the recycling days, the household hazardous waste. We collect batteries at all of the libraries. I answer tons of problems about where to get rid of paint. Um, and as I distributed the recycling trail, um, coming up next month is the National Recycling, uh, Day. You're going to be kicking off three new trails, the automobile trail, the rift Indonesian Trail, and the antique trail. Um, and that's basically to get some of our visitors that come here to go to all of the, the stores and, um, for the residents to know where to get rid of oil, batteries, and, um, scrap that needed. So those will be kicked off, um, on November fifteenth. Those are new trails for our recycling trail. Um, the thing about the, the plan, um, is that, uh, we, I came before you to talk about the parcel fee that was defeated back, um, months ago and the policy committee had to draft, um, and figure out how to pay for the, the district and our, in completing our plan. And, um, so we reverted back to our initial discussion, which was to raise the generation fees, which is any garbage that's generated in the district goes to many landfills and facilities, uh, in the area. Um, and those folks send us checks every month and they pay us three dollars per ton. Um, every normal, uh, person generates about a ton of garbage a year. So you can imagine. Um, so the policy committee recommended that that three dollars per ton go up to five dollars per ton. Um, no, individuals will not be seeing this fee in, in their bills uh, only if the haulers raise their fees. Um, then the landfill, there's a landfill fee and that is a one dollar fee for in-district waste, two dollar fee for out-of-district, and a one dollar fee for out-of-state. And the policy commended, committee recommended that that go to two, two, two because that generated enough funds for the district to operate to do the basic programs that we're doing now. Um, if you look at the fact sheet, um, with the new landfill fees and the generation fees, it will generate about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, sixty-five, sixty percent of that goes to the drop-off, um, picking up the recycling, processing it, and, um, and selling it off. Um, and then administration's about twenty-two percent, which is my office, the truck, audit, insurance, utilities, that kind of thing. Um, events, oh, my salary, events and special collections at forty-five uh, thousand. Um, the household hazardous waste just by itself is twenty, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand a year. So it's quite expensive. And then education and outreach, um, and then match for grants, um, twenty thousand. That's how the match is really important because I can write a grant to Ohio EPA for tire, um, collections, which I've done over the last year. We collected thirteen semi-trucks full of tires in the district. And with that fifty thousand dollar grant, um, I can get thirteen semi-trucks of tires instead of cleaning up, up in Wayne National Forest or in the backyard. So people, um, it gives people an opportunity to get rid of those at a very reasonable fee. So, um, uh, with these funds, it will pay for the basic programming we're doing now. And the policy committee did do a tier-two priority list and a tier-three priority list. And those are things that the public and, and, uh, experts in the field recommended. And we'll get to those when and if we get the funds to be able to do it. So, um, I'm a very good grant writer, so hopefully we can get to those sooner than later. But, um, I ask that you, um, support the plan. It's, uh, it's written, uh, I, I wrote it. We saved quite a bit of funds by doing, uh, it ourselves with the EPA template. And it has a lot of public input. So, um, really encourage you to vote yes on, um, approving the plan. You will not be alone, um, many, I have about thirty-seven percent of the, the population, the representative districts, um, jurisdictions, um, that have passed it already. I could go through them if, if you want me to, but city of Albany, many of the townships, York, township just passed it, um, uh, but I left my list over there, so to remember them all. Lodi, uh, Rome, I just got Birm and, um, the city of Athens is on their third reading coming up and city of Logan had their first reading last week. So we're moving forward on this. I have to get at least sixty percent of the population in the jurisdictions that represent them, um, or else the EPA rights are. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts, um. So I am more than happy to answer any questions. Yes.
Will, will the county commissioners that are running for office, and if that changes, will that change any of your, um, the committee or?
Um, the, uh, the county, well, first of all.
Charlie, in Charlie Atkins?
Well, they, they could, um.
They get bumped out when somebody else comes in, will they be on board with this? I guess that's the question.
Um, I, I, I have no idea who might win. I mean, the three county commissioners in Hawking are all.
But will that affect? Who's in there? Will that affect this program?
We present, we, um, live under this plan, the solid waste districts because this is supported by all of the jurisdictions. So their responsibility is not to develop policy, it's to implement it and to watch over and make sure the funds are spent properly.
So, so they can override anything that's already been set?
In the plan.
Okay. They can?
Well, I mean, they could refuse to support something, I guess, but if it's in the plan, the, the commissioners are there as a fiscal agent and to oversee and make sure that we're operating as we've said. But the policy committee sets the policy.
Okay. We got a bunch of tire rights, I think.
I, shh, 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 I was hoping you weren't going to say anything, you know?
Oops.
We could, we could talk about that later. The EPA actually, I got the email today, the, the, um, tires that were up on the road, they're being picked up. Um, but we had a whole thing going, uh, for a week, I think. Actually, I think it was three days.
Yeah, something like that.
But it was all the volunteers went into the Wayne and got those tires out and then they wanted me to come and pick them up with my truck. And, and I said, um, well, let's just hold off on that until we discover.
The follow-through wasn't the best, but they're out of the woods. That's what's really.
Yeah, no, it's, no, it's EPA's program takes a while, but it's all good. So, any other questions or?
I don't believe so. Thank you for the update. Thanks for all that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
I need a second.
Uh, I'll second it.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
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 Ms. Sonne? Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three twenty passes.
Yay!
Resolution twenty-three twenty-one, if someone would, uh, introduce it.
I would introduce it.
A resolution authorizing the city to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigation for Swift Product Records Management System. Whereas the Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigation has established a swift protect record management system for Ohio criminal record management to ensure Ohio's crime reporting and record system is in line with best practices, FCI standards. Whereas it is necessary for the city's police department to participate with BCI and to have access to the swift protect record management system. Whereas it is necessary for the city to enter into an agreement with BCI and council determines that such agreement is in the best interest of the city. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city manager, acting city manager and/or police chief shall be and hereby are authorized to negotiate a memorandum of understanding with the Ohio Bureau of Investigation for the Swift Product Record Management System. The acting city manager, city manager and/or police chief shall timely report to council and keep the police and fire committee apprised of the status of negotiation with BCI and with the status of the MOU. Nothing in this resolution may be construed as authorizing any expenditure of funds. Accordingly, council shall by separate legislation provide for any appropriations of funds as may be necessary in which council in its sole discretion determines to be appropriate. City council hereby finds that the resolution was adopted in meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law duly adopted by council on first reading the twenty-eighth day of October, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to adopt?
Salute.
Second. Any citizens' comments? Any council discussion?
It's our report writing software.
Assistant police, assistant realtors?
It's assistant the police department uses to generate all of our reports.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Ms. Sonne? Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three twenty-one pass. Resolution twenty-three twenty-two, if someone would introduce it.
I'll introduce it.
A resolution authorizing the city to enter into agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation for a resurfacing project in the city of Nelsonville. Whereas there is a need for a resurfacing project in the city of Nelsonville on State Route thirty-three, one point nine four to two point five two and four point two five to four point eight eight and State Route two seventy-eight at, uh, zero to zero point five seven. Total length of work to be approximately two point eight eight miles. Whereas federal and state funds are available to help defray costs associated with the resurfacing project. Whereas appropriation of city funds for the resurfacing project have already been duly made by council. Whereas council needs to authorize the city to sign the agreement for the project and to give consent to adopt for the resurfacing project. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Council hereby adopts the preliminary legislation attached due to and incorporated by reference of the DPA. Council clerk shall complete the certificate of copy with seal and shall return the same to ODOT. City manager, acting city manager and/or police chief is hereby authorized to execute any and all agreements necessary to develop plans and to complete the project. Appropriations of city funds necessary for completion of this resurfacing project have already been duly made by council. City council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in meeting, in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure to expedite the highway project and to promote highway safety. And it shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage and approval. Otherwise, it shall take, it shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Duly adopted by council on first reading on the eighth day of October, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to adopt?
Salute. Second.
Any citizens' comments?
Is this the part where the, that what, where our four-hundred-thousand dollars is going to be used to complete the total cost?
Do we know what the actual cost is at this point?
Yeah, it is. It's the Canal Street and Baroque Street redo. But the current estimates from ODOT are coming in under, under expectations. So they're only asking right now, I think it's a hundred-seventy-nine thousand, which is much less than we've been setting aside. So they did say to, they said to keep it in contingency in case the actual bids estimate, the bid is two different things. In case the bids are actually high, but there's at least a chance this project will come in under budget from the start, so.
And you say we, we have this money to decide?
Mm-hmm. The city's been saving this project for several years. With the hope, for our part. For our part.
Okay.
Our part, which I believe is twelve percent.
I don't know the percentage.
It's, it's certainly much less than twenty, but it's a small portion.
That sounds, that sounds familiar.
What do you have him set aside?
I had council create a street project fund specifically for this project.
So what are you putting in there for to?
They set aside, I'm forgetting the numbers, I believe it's three-hundred thousand from the street levy over the course of four years, and a hundred thousand from the gas tax, the two-hundred fund. And honestly, if they go and spend, they will just go back to those funds.
Why would they do this?
They're getting ready to put the whole project out for bid, so.
Next year.
Early next year, probably.
Any other council discussion? Or common rule? Motion to adopt. Oh, I'm sorry, motion to adopt. I thought we already had.
Yeah.
We did. Yep, we had, I moved, and Mr. Booth seconded.
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Flowers?
C.
Taylor?
Yep.
Resolution twenty-three twenty-two pass. Moving on to city manager's report.
So we've got, D.D. Weber is now actively working on the base for sewer project, which will be the scenic lane. They're currently working on getting some sewer lines tied in on the alley between Fort Worth and the street. So that's where we've seen most of their trucks lately. Keep an eye on them. Once they clear out of there, they'll be moving over to city lane and get started on that end. This Thursday, it's Halloween, so everyone just be safe out there and keep an eye on the kids and make a good time, not have any incidents. I've had a couple of meetings. I met with the county land bank. We got several houses in towns, in town that were selected for demo. I had a meeting with Orca. We discussed some of the recent events that they have, some funding. They're looking at bringing Ross County on as a member of Orca. It was pretty exciting news for them. I've been conducting interviews for the city's assistant position. We're going to have some good candidates, so I hope to have that position built in the near future. Yes. Leak pickup is going to be starting soon. Jason wanted to let everyone know that they plan on starting next week. It should be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And then the week after that, it will be Tuesday and Thursday. And it's just going to alternate until the beginning of December, but he'll post a press release in the near future. Like, everyone, where?
What's on exactly, name?
Leak pickup, so.
If you make a pile of leaks.
Yeah, if you bring a pile out, yeah. He'll post the kind of directions you need to follow, because I don't think you bag them like they just break them to buy the curve and they suck them up on the sack.
Where do they go?
I'm not positive where they take them. Harry, do you know where they take those?
Right now, out back. It's out here. You can go jump out of it after lunch.
You go first.
I'll go. So we've got some new posts put up on the square, and people might have noticed, including new stop signs. Going in.
I did not see them.
They have larger signs now, and they've been scooted a little bit off the sidewalk more towards the road to try and help it be a little more visible for everyone to see.
Thank you.
And then Jason wanted to let everyone know that they're going to be doing at least one more round of patching before it gets too cold. And if anyone has any requests, could I base them to the city's Facebook Messenger? You can check that pretty readily, or you can send them via email as well to the, to anyone at the city and we'll get it to them. That's one point.
Okay. Any council questions for the city man? Thank you. Moving on to Good of the Order, Mr. Sonne, would you like to start?
Just wish everyone was safe and happy October thirty-first. Halloween.
Mr. Dumpy?
I'm just, so we, you know, just voted on a project tonight. It's been put out that the city doesn't do any paving. So that, for those who don't understand what was being paved, that is the whole East Canal Street from one end of town to the other will be being, being paved. According to the experts that are on the radio, the paving done, wasting money. According to the actual facts that are out there, according to our auditor, we're one of the best financial positions that we've ever been in. Not going broke, not spending money on hundreds of thousands of vehicles driving around aimlessly. If they are, I don't see them, so. Also, wasn't going to touch on this, but you know, when accusations are made, I guess you have to address them. So it was brought to my attention that Mr. Taylor and I were designated slum lords of this town. So with that, Governor Smith, I would love to put my rentals up against your houses any day of the year. Your property in Waterford and your rental on Adams Street. So, you know, that stuff is tiresome. It's bullying, as we're talking about bullying. That's what that is. And, you know, it's not enough. So, thank you.
Mr. Flowers?
I just have one thing I'd like to kind of put out there, and I, I guess I probably should take this to the street, the street committee, but you're talking about picking up leaves, and I've noticed the street sweeper running around cars like this. And I know in some of our, us older folks' days, there were signs stuck out the days that the street sweeper was going to be going down Chestnut Street on the north-south side, up Chestnut Street on the north side. Don't park your cars there. And I think it would be a nice way to revise and get our streets in better shape. It would do another thing. It would, it would remove cars that are sitting without tags and that are immobile and have been sitting, not moving for a year. Does that mean I'm done?
Time's up.
Time's up. But anyway, I, I, do I take that to the street committee?
Yes. Over the years, that's been addressed in many different, different ways. It's been done with the signs. It's been done with trying to set up zones on this day, that day.
You could go out on waterbills, perhaps, you know, a little notation on the waterbill, which I've seen that done in different areas.
Yeah.
Somebody said we probably still have the signs from back in the sixties, you know, but.
They're actually still up. If you drive down on the street, there's several. They're still in there.
Oh, really?
They're faded.
But I think it would, I really think it would improve our streets, the conditions of the sewer, when you get these cars sitting there forever, and then once they move, they've got grass under them like this with dirt clogs, and that's going to run down in sewers. So I just think it'd be a nice thing to implement that. And that's all I got. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Taylor?
I want to wish everybody a happy Halloween. Hopefully, all the, hopefully, there's going to be lots of kids out. It's always great when the kids get out and get all dressed up, and hopefully, everybody's safe, so please watch out for them. Next Tuesday, please go out and vote, and it's an important day.
For the street?
And vote for the street levy. That's absolutely true. And I want to congratulate Nelsonville Buckeyes, the football team. Beat the team down south, you know, as well, as well as.
It's cold down, so.
City of Ohio, so they, they've got both those trophies with you, which I know. And I want to congratulate the volleyball ladies as well. They, I believe it was, I, I'm taking your light, buddy. I'm sorry. And I want to, the volleyball girls, they won districts, and they're moving on to Sweet Sixteen. And a special shout-out to Megan Booth. Her mom and I could not be more proud.
Well, thank you so much for stealing my time for me. Picking back on that, not only did they win TVC on District Sweet Sixteen, had five all-TVC players, as well as the offensive and defensive players of the year, so. She had her hundred and nine seniors, and hopefully, everybody can get to Heath on her tonight, watch them in the regional semifinals.
Where is that?
Heath High School. Yes.
Didn't she also get her two-thousand?
Two-thousand assist, yeah. She should be in the top, I think, top thirty-eight now, all-time in the state of Ohio, so.
That's one.
That's awesome.
Okay, thank you. I'll give you my friend then. I'll finish with, please, everyone get out and vote next Tuesday. Couple of big issues, of course. And I'll finish with, I want to thank all the student athletes at the school, all of them. And, you know, even though you may not win a championship, everyone participates, and that's a great thing. So with that, I make a motion to go into executive session under RRC one-twenty-one point two-two G for Personnel and Legal Matters. Invite in Mr. Rob and Chief Oliver, and we'll, we'll need the city auditor to vote. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, and the city auditor, Mr. Sappick.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonne?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
And I'll note the time at eight forty-four. Motion to adjourn from executive session at nine twenty.
Second. Third. So moved.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonne?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes. Yes.